Call regular meeting, Westlake City Council order for August twenty first of two thousand and twenty-three. Once more if you have anything, Curtis is bringing it up, if you want to speak on any item on the agenda. Miss Peterson's gonna do the invocation, all of Mr. Harrison with the pledge, please stand.
Move your hats, please. Heavenly Father, we come before you tonight, Lord, to ask for many blessings for each one of the souls represented here tonight. Lord, we know this world is faced with lots of problems, issues, or we pray this council will make our city and make certain that we make the decisions right for our citizens. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. Peterson?
Here.
Mr. Pryor?
Here.
Mr. Rujan?
Here.
Mr. Harrison?
Here.
Mr. Brown?
Here.
We have a form. I am gonna introduce, uh, Mr. Mark Judson, he's a candidate for family court judge, and we've given all, uh, folks that are running for political office an opportunity if they'd like to sign up to come up and speak a little about their candidacy. I'd like to welcome to my phone, Mr. Mark Judson.
Thank you. Uh, thank you for allowing me to come before you tonight and tell you a little bit about my candidacy for family court judge. I'm Mark Judson, and I'm running for family court, family and juvenile court judge in Calhoushe Parish. I'm running for Guy Bradbury's old seat, this is the seat that Guy Bradbury used to hold, and he vacated it when he was elected to the Court of Appeal. So it's now an open seat, and like everything else, the election date is October the fourteenth, early voting is September thirtieth through October the seventh. I've got a pretty good website, and I've got good information to learn a little bit about my background and who I am and where I'm from. What I'd like to share with you all now is why, the why I am choosing to run for family court judge. Uh, the short answer is, it's what I know, it's what I do. And through the hand of God, or the river of life, my life's journey, I feel like I'm sort of shaped up to be a good choice for our next family court judge. Uh, a little bit about that, um, came up practicing law first at the Third Circuit Court of Appeal, uh, clerking for Henry Yelburton. Anyone with my hair color or older may remember Henry Yelburton, he was a great man, a very good lawyer, judge, appellate court judge, a great mentor, a great place to start a legal career. After that, I was very fortunate to be hired on by David Painter. David Painter was a Lake Charles City Councilman, he was mayor pro temp in Lake Charles for a little while, uh, he was a district court judge and a court of appeal judge. And as I like to say, through hard work and determination, I was the number two lawyer in Painter Law Firm. Now, everybody gets one guess as to how many lawyers there were in Painter Law Firm, but I was the number two guy. And David, um, he was younger than I am now when he hired me, that kind of freaks me out. Uh, David was a neat guy, was six foot seven, played football at Tulane, and he was drafted in the nineteen fifty-nine NFL draft, uh, messed up his knee, couldn't play, his knee surgery was my good fortune and Southwest Louisiana's good fortune, as he was a great citizen of Southwest Louisiana. Another neat thing about David Painter that a lot of people may not know, is that he himself was adopted as a new baby in nineteen thirty-seven. And he was three months old, and he had a great law practice, he did all kinds of things. But, uh, his being adopted inspired him in part to do a lot of adoption work, sort of in return. And for a long time, he was our area's foremost adoption attorney, a lot of families would not be families but for David Painter. And I was very fortunate to catch sort of the second cap of his adoption career, and it was new babies that was the primary source, and I say new baby adoption to distinguish that from intra-family adoption, they're both very important. But in an intra-family adoption, the lawyer in the legal system is legalizing a relationship that already exists. In the new baby adoption, the lawyer in the legal system is facilitating, had, playing a huge role in facilitating a parent-child relationship, helping a mother do the ultimate act of love and placing her child with, um, adopted parents. It's a wonderful, wonderful, uh, experience when it goes well. And that sort of led me into a family law practice, and I've been practicing family law primarily, not exclusively, but primarily ever since for over thirty years. And there's one other thing that I think makes me a good choice for our next family court judge, and that is the Southwest Louisiana Law Center. Included in my thirty-year career, I was twelve years the executive director of the Southwest Louisiana Law Center. That is a nonprofit law firm, always had to say that twice, nonprofit law firm, by design, it's a nonprofit law firm, five oh one C three organization, its mission was to help the under-resourced of Southwest Louisiana with civil legal needs. We didn't do criminal work, we weren't against it, we just couldn't knock it in, and it, and we didn't do any of the money cases. We didn't do hurricane cases, we didn't do car wreck cases, we didn't do bankruptcy cases. Plenty of lawyers will stop and help people with those types of cases, because those cases generate the fees for the lawyers. So we did the types of cases where you had to pay a lawyer out of your pocket in order for the lawyer to represent you. So, a lot of successions, a lot of contested successions, a lot of intra-family adoption, a lot of real estate disputes for the value of the real estate, was not necessarily in the higher power attorney, and then we did a lot of family law. And when you work with a nonprofit organization like that, you learn how courts' resources can be best used to help the most people in the parish, and you have to work collaboratively with other expert groups and agencies in order to get to the root cause of solving problems, usually the legal problem is symptomatic of the bigger problem. Usually the legal problem is symptomatic of a mental health issue, a behavioral health issue, a drug addiction issue, a power and control abuse issue, housing issues, poverty, stuff like that. As the director of the Southwest Louisiana Law Center, I got the privilege of working with multiple expert agencies, such as Family and Youth Counseling, the Child Advocates Center, COSA, United Way, Catholic Charities, Matthew twenty-five forty, Sulfur Christian Community Coalition, Southwest Louisiana Bar Foundation, Louisiana Bar Foundation, Southwest Louisiana, uh, bar, I said that one twice, Calhoushe Council on Aging, Southwest Louisiana Response, NAMI, Project Build a Future, A Community Voice, Oasis Room and Shelter, the Calhoushe Parish District Attorney's Expungement Program, Veterans Court, Mental Health Court, Drug Court, maybe one or two others. When you get to work substantively, I don't mean we had a cup of coffee and just talked about things, I mean, I actually took cases and direct referrals, we collaboratively worked to get to the root cause of problems, and I think that that gives me a unique perspective that I would never have had, had I been just a straight, everyday court clerk. And I think that that shakes me up to know how to use a court to help the people the most in Calhoushe Parish. And I ask for y'all's consideration, I ask for all y'all's consideration, I ask for your vote, if you can vote for me, if you're in Westlake, you can vote for me, if you're in Moss Bluff, you can vote for me, if you're in Bell City and Hayes, you can vote for me, if you're in limited bits and pieces of Lake Charles, you can vote for me. There's a map over there, uh, check it out, and I thank you for your time, and I appreciate it very much.
Thank you, Mark.
All right, thank you.
Item six, consent counter, I need a motion and a second to approve the regular meeting held July seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-three. A motion by Miss Peterson, I need a second. Approve, say it with Mr. Pryor, any discussion, any objection, hearing not without an appearance. Item seven, been out, if we have any items made? Item eight, I need a motion and a second to approve, disapprove, discuss hearing from Tony Sonnier and Louisiana Rural Water Association with results of the rate study. Current water rates, proposed water rates, current wastewater rates, and proposed wastewater rates. I want to let you know that we are just introducing the ordinance, we're not gonna be changing any kind of rates, we're just visiting with about, uh, what he's, what he has to show the city or where we need to be to make sure that, uh, our grants are available. Got a motion by Miss Peterson to discuss, Miss Peterson?
Yes, sir.
I need a second. Second by Mr. Harrison. All right, under discussion, I'd like to invite Tony to come up and kind of give us his background and what we've been doing and, and rate study that's, uh, what, what this proposal is about.
All right, thank you, Mayor, Council, uh...
Can we get that microphone booster to you? I think that would help.
This stuff.
Tony, if you would, give a little bit about your background and what, what you did.
Uh, I, like you said, I'm Tony Sonnier, I'm with Louisiana Rural Water Association, I've been with Louisiana Rural Water Association for about, uh, a little over four years now. Uh, Louisiana Rural Water Association, we are a federally funded and state-funded program. We go throughout the state of Louisiana, uh, working primarily with populations of ten thousand and under, working with water systems and wastewater systems, providing assistance in pretty much any way necessary, anything from out in the field, from testing meters to, uh, looking for sewer infiltration, to pump issues, meter issues, all the way to inside-the-office compliance issues, uh, rate studies, obviously, uh, and everything that we do, because the city of Westlake is a member of Louisiana Rural Water, everything that we come and do for the city is free, uh, because we are federally and state-funded programs. Uh, I ran a water system for about sixteen years prior to working for Louisiana Rural Water, and, uh, I'm a class four certified water op, water operator, and, uh, we, I primarily cover the twenty parishes in the southwest corner of the state. So the mayor called me in and asked for us to do a water and waste, water rate study, and also as a requirement of a grant that they receive, are attempting to receive, uh, from the water sector program, that requires, uh, an entity to come in, an outside entity to come in and do a rate study on the water and wastewater systems. So we, we started, uh, I began this rate study in May of this year. We began compiling all the information, uh, through all the audits, we used the two thousand and twenty-one and two thousand and twenty-two audit, the two thousand and twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-three audit, and then we took the twenty-four proposed budget to project forward, because we always want to look at where we're going, not where we've been. And, uh, these are all numbers from the city of Westlake, uh, Louisiana Rural Water, we are not a regulatory agency, we're not saying that these are the things that we have to do, we're here to present what we found in the financial records of the city of Westlake. So we, we began and, uh... Would you rather start with the water or the wastewater, Mayor, do you have a preference?
Water would be fine.
Water would be fine, all right, so we're gonna go with the water. Uh, gathered all the proprietary information and, uh, began inputting information, uh, throughout this, currently where they're sitting, now, uh, they are, the city is currently putting six thousand two hundred dollars a month into a short-lived assets, that's for maintenance and, uh, any kind of repairs that are needed throughout the system. Uh, looking at the monies that's, uh, basically in the bank, including the customer deposits, which is restricted monies that can't be used, the debt service reserve money, uh, restricted, uh, and the short-lived asset balance, which is, this total up here, is up about three hundred fifteen thousand dollars. Looks like it's, it's a lot, but in reality, one well or something goes out, that, that, that money is not gonna really go that far, uh, but it's nice to have it there. Uh, we went through all of the expenses for the, we look at three years, total of three years, to kind of get a, a average of what everything is doing and how it is, uh, how it's going. You can see that, uh, total operating expenses of one million three hundred, uh, two million three hundred thousand and one million eight hundred thousand. This, they had a, uh, a big project that they did, and, and, and that's why this expense was up, and they are currently, uh, in the process of changing out all the meters, I believe that started last year, the initial price of, uh, buying all the meters brought their expenses up. Uh, looking at the revenues, we can see that we are projecting forward about one point three million dollars in revenues. Uh, total revenues in general show that went from two million, two million to about one million five. Uh, there was a lot of transfers in and out, and also we wanted to look at, uh, you see, we didn't transfer any sales tax in at this point, it's projecting forward, because we want to see where the water system stands on its own two feet. So if anything is to be transferred in, that would be additional on top of this. So you can see with the tax monies transferred in, they're, they're, they're showing a gain. With no tax monies transferred in, we're showing at a loss, the water system standing on its own two feet is not really happening in this time. Projected the, uh, the customers, the growth of about two hundred and fifty due to some subdivisions and, and, and other things that are coming into the area. Uh, looking at all the customer counts, the total residential, senior citizen connection, handicap connections, commercial connections, and industrial connections. Uh, and, and we have the water produced on the one, this is just showing currently where it's at, the water sold. You see that about a hundred and thirty million for the whole year, a hundred and sixty-two million, and we're projecting a hundred and ninety-two million, uh, moving forward this year with the expected growth. These are, this section right here is kind of a checks and balances that we use, that we look and make sure that everything is, uh, everything is, is, is running normal in the correct range. This green square right here shows us basically just the water that you produce versus your expenses, what it costs to produce one thousand gallons of water. It's costing the town, we're projecting that it's gonna cost nine dollars and fifty-four cents, you can see this year, again, because the expenses were up, that it costs more because of the expenses were up. But on average, I, I would say probably the ten, ten dollars to produce a thousand gallons. Your current average customer use, uh, your residential customers are averaging about five thousand six hundred gallons, that's normal for what we see around the state as we're doing these kinds of things. Commercial and industrial is about thirty-seven thousand gallons a month, uh, which is also average for what we see, uh, currently around the state. Currently, the residential customers are paying about two thousand gallons for, uh, thirty-three, thirty-three dollars and thirty-seven cents for the first two thousand gallons. Paying four dollars and nine cents per thousand after that, that is the, that is the current rate that will be on the next bill because of the annual four percent increase that goes into effect as of August first.
Yes.
August first. Uh, so this will be the, the, the rates that you will see on your next bill. Uh, senior citizens for the first two thousand, twenty-two dollars and thirty-one cents and four dollars and nine cents per thousand after that. Uh, you can see they're paying about eleven dollars and sixteen cents, a reduced rate for the senior citizens and handicap connections. This is where we started, uh, looking at things a little differently, commercially, for the first eight thousand gallons, commercially they're paying forty-two fifty, which comes out to five dollars and thirty-one cents per thousand gallons after. That's cheaper than what the residents are paying, and cheaper than it's costing the city of Westlake to produce a thousand gallons of water. You can't keep operating in those types of scenarios with, without having to transfer in, uh, lots of tax monies. Uh, you can see that currently, same thing on the industrial side, for, for ten thousand gallons, they were getting, they were paying sixty-five dollars and thirty-nine cents for six dollars and fifty-four cents per thousand gallons, which again is way less than, even, even less than what your senior citizens were getting water. Mayor asked a question, and he said, "Why are we just seeing this now?", because you get audited every year, but they audit the whole town as an umbrella. When we come in and do so, a type of audit like this, it's just on the water system and just on the wastewater system, so that you see it standing out on its own, we shine a light on it. And, uh, so I, this right here is basically the meats and the potatoes of the rate study for us. We put in all the city's information, the current rates, the number of customers, the gallons that they're getting, average gallons that they're using per month. We project that with them using this amount of water, uh, every customer using the same amount, which that doesn't happen, that's why our projections are a little different than what the actual income is, but it's a predict, projection, we project around one, one million four hundred and fifty thousand, they're actually at one million three hundred and eight three thousand. We're generally gonna come in a little bit above, a little bit below, sometimes right at it, just depending on, on, on the average usage and the projection. Uh, the miscellaneous income and the interest income is the numbers that come from the town up here, all of these except for the water sales. Total that up, you can see that the total, uh, total revenues of one point five million, proposed budget needs one point nine million, for a loss of three hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars. That's where the water system is currently standing at on its own. Uh, so then we began to look at what was being put in, you can see that, you know, last year, there was over a million dollars worth of taxes put in, the year before that, five hundred thousand dollars worth of taxes put in to allow the water system to be at a sustainable level. So without transferring any of that in, and we, we began to look at what it would take for the water system to stand on its own with minimal taxes being transferred in.
Hold on, before we get to that, did I have a question for him at this point in time, uh, on, on what we've seen and where we're at? Is there any question from any of the council? Okay. I would like to hear like one thing that he didn't say, we're making it for nine sixty-four, and if you look at some of those numbers, we're selling it less than what we make it for, and what you had told me was basically that we, we can't give away, see, go ahead, I'll let you say it.
Right. Uh, it, it, in actuality, it's illegal to give away water, you can't give away water. You have to, uh, you have to sell it for what it's costing you to make it. So when we looked into it, and, so the city was given, or is in line to get a water sector program grant, and on the water side, it was, uh... Half, half a million on the water side, a five hundred thousand dollar grant on the water side, about
Two million.
Two million on the wastewater side. So a half a million dollar grant is coming toward, to the wastewater, uh, for continued improvement, they're looking at putting in another ground storage tank, uh, finish up the meters, and, uh, I believe that's about it on the water side. And...
Real quick question, I have another question for our engineer. I was told earlier, if we're not at a certain percentages, we could lose the opportunity of those grants. I'll, I'll ask you on that behalf, from our engineering standpoint.
So, under the water sector program, one of the requirements that triggered this rate study is that is one of the requirements that these grants and investments are being made into systems, that they want to ensure that the money that's being invested is being properly used in the system, and that is operation, operation, operating, I'm trying to pronounce it.
Right, sustainable.
Sustainable. So, as he mentioned before, on the water side of things, y'all were granted half a million dollar grant, which they're analyzing from the water side, he signed the rate, and then on the sanitary sewer side, it was a two million dollar grant, which he hasn't even presented that recently yet, but that's what's triggering that, and as a responsibility of the, being the recipient of said grant, that you, yeah, you have to comply with this rate study. So, there's deficiencies, you have to have a plan action.
Right.
Hey, look, we all wanna run outside and play one.
Hell, yeah, everyone, it's raining. Yeah, yeah. So, a, a, as we go through, the one, one thing that we look for, we just brought up the sustainability factor. You can see y'all are sitting at a point eight two currently, where the water system is sitting at on its own two feet. Water sector requirement for the grant requires you to be at a one point one five. They require you to have a O and M, short-lived assets, basically a savings account, operation and maintenance, that you have to fund to be able to repair or replace any of the assets that they are bringing in with the, uh, the project from the water sector.
Tony, just to reiterate, currently, currently, was just to re, restate what you said, the water system standing alone is not standing alone.
Right. Right.
Without benefit of transfers from other departments and other funds within the city.
Right. Yes, ma'am. So the, uh, the, the short-lived assets account, we just... It, it's the same balance that was originally being, that is originally being paid currently, we just took from this one, the sixty-two hundred, and we reduced it to twelve hundred and fifty. What you have to do is take the most critical asset of the project, divide that by twenty years, and fund that for over a twenty-year period, and that's where we came up with this number. Uh, the, every other number throughout this rate study is the same, all your expenses total up to the same, all your incomes, uh, your, your customer accounts, your usage, only difference is, on, on this one, we've got, we've got the total water produced or purchased. You can see three years ago, they were, they were at an eighty-one percent loss. Now, this, we look at water produced versus water sold, that's all we're looking at here, we're not looking at flushed water, we're not looking at backwashed water, we're not looking at leaks, we're not looking at any of those things. So that's why this percentage is, is up, it is up higher than normal, and we are looking into things to, uh, see about reducing it down, but the biggest thing we want to show at this point, you can see that this year it was eighty-one percent, seventy-three percent, you can see it's down to fifty-nine percent. Over the last couple of years, they've been changing meters out, meters are your cash registers in your water system. After a residential meter gets to be, have about a million gallons on it, they're, they are either gonna slow down and or stop. Uh, your bigger meters, it's more than a million gallons, but they are all designed to slow down or stop, and I believe there's gonna be a drastic change in it, as you can see, we've, we've gone from eighty-one percent to fifty-nine percent. We've started accounting for some of the water and some of the backwash, uh, backwashing of the filters and the softeners. Uh, we've been, we've started reducing some of that out, uh, we're looking into the flushing program, seeing how much they're flushing, to continue to be able to, to verify why... to continue to be able to, to verify why we have this fifty-nine percent water loss. And I believe we will get it, get it all figured out and down to the, the point that it needs to be kinda average around a twenty percent. You're gonna have some loss that, that you, you, you're not gonna, you're not gonna be able to account for a hundred percent because just, just a water leak, you can't a hundred percent be sure of exactly how much it leaked. So you're gonna have some that you're not gonna be able to count for. But I just want to show that the meters, and that's really the only thing that they've done, you know, with the exception of fixing a leak when they find it. Uh, you never know when you have those. But, uh, changing out the meters has reduced the water loss significantly. So, looking at the rates, we've adjusted a little bit on the residential rate to go from thirty-three, thirty-seven for the first two thousand gallons, which is the same rate that you will be paying with the four percent increase. That hasn't changed. We went up a little bit from... From four oh nine to five dollars, uh, which brings your average bill from forty-six currently to fifty-one. It is a, uh... That is a, about a five dollar increase, six dollar increase, uh, on residentially. Senior and handicapped, same thing, uh, went up to the five dollars. That's just the four percent annual. That is, is done every year. And then, then we went commercially. So what we did, and, and you can see this number right here, uh, is basically this number divided by five for five thousand gallons. And it puts the commercial customer paying seventeen sixty-eight, and you can see the residential are paying sixteen sixty-nine. It's right at, they're paying right at the same price. Whereas if y'all remember over here, they were only paying five dollars and thirty-one cents versus sixteen sixty-nine. So that's all we did on, uh, commercial and industrial. As you can see, these, these are up to eighteen twenty. Commercial and industrial should pay a little bit more than residential. Uh, that is normal. You have a cross connection control program that you have to, uh, work through on the commercial and industrial side. That takes the guys more time, more gas, more, uh, you know, different things. It is a big jump on the commercial, but it brought the commercial up to paying the same thing residentially and a comparative rate versus your residential rates. And to get the water system also standing on its own two feet and at the one point one-five, which is a requirement of the Water Sector Program grant, that it has to, you have to be at a one point one-five, and you have to have that savings account that I showed earlier. This takes you from the two hundred and forty-eight thousand dollar loss to a two hundred and eighty-four thousand dollar profit and puts you at a one point one-five sustainability factor. That's the water system standing on its own with minimal transfers in. Instead of having to transfer in a million dollars worth of taxes, you have minimal transfers in. Uh, again, that's, that would be the largest increases that, that you would have. We will have to, uh, that's gonna be in discussions.
Okay, and that's, that's kinda like, kinda some of the discussions from the councilmen, I maybe like talk about. This is an introduction, and the numbers that you're showing, proposing, we can still work with those, try to work with them. Uh, that only has us subsidizing it by about sixty thousand, I think, on that.
Sixty thousand on the water.
We, we hear our commercial folks saying this is a big increase. But as we found out from doing this audit, they haven't been paying anywhere close to the same amount as the residential have been paying. Is that correct in saying that, Tony?
Yes, sir.
Okay. That's, uh, that's some of the things that sometimes when you do an audit like this, will show you where your city stands. And I, I, I can tell you, I love every one of our commercial businesses in, in our area. But what we found versus what we need to do is where the tough decisions come in. Now, we can look at subsidizing, tweaking this. This is an introduction to look at this over the next month or two months or whatever we need to do to get to it. I'm telling you once more, we're not changing any utility bills tonight. And whatever we look at from a proposed standpoint is merely proposed. I can only meet with two councilmen at a time, and, uh, you know, without the sunshine law coming into effect, I can tell you my staff, uh, my accountants, we're all working very hard to make this as palatable as it can. We have inherited a water system that is not standing on its own. I have a really good public works guy that's gone out there and found a lot of meters that hadn't been working. Watching with his back flushing and the percentages we're doing things with. These are the kind of decisions I feel that we gotta like it sometimes to make tough decisions to keep our city solid. The water system's in the red. The wastewater system's in the red. We've been working with the Max in the, in the, uh, in the golf course to get those back. So these are things that in the first few months of, of being a new mayor and a new council here, that are very important for us to address. And I appreciate Tony coming in to show us where we're at and what we're moving forward to. Ms. Peterson?
Mayor, I, I, I appreciate you saying that. Unfortunately, we find ourselves in a situation where we have significant inflation costs. Up the last week, it was, remember what, eleven percent, uh, inflation cost? And, and ultimately, not to be disrespectful, but this has been a can kicked down the road for many years, and it's finally landed in our lap. So, um, and I do appreciate your study because it's the glaring evidence of that we, we just have not done our due diligence throughout the years. And now, the council has got to make, uh, some tough decisions for our, our residents.
Any other counsel? No good?
So, uh, it could be funded from other sources than our, than our budget, correct?
Yes, sir. Yes. You can, I, you can see that last year, y'all transferred, uh, over a million dollars into it through sales tax and had to loan taxes and tax supplements to get it to stand on its own.
Mr. Milver, if you'd speak into the mic so I could hear you.
I think one of those sales tax supplements might be transferred in for debt service too.
For debt service?
Yes.
Okay.
That's what's the, the large one. We have, we have a financial payment over a million dollars in debt service that has to be funded as well for a couple more years, and then we won't have that.
Right. Y'all got your company paid off.
In, um, July twenty-sixth, we won't have that payment.
And, uh, Ms. Laka, as I repeat earlier what you said, we've never had one of these rate services done before. We're having this done because we're qualifying for federal money, correct?
Correct, yes, sir.
Two point five billion dollars.
Correct. Y'all are not the only public entity dealing with this. There's numerous other municipalities that have government support.
This is something relatively new that they've put on us, and if you do that, you have to have a audit of the rural water.
There, there's two things lately. The, all you grant, the LCDBG, uh, LCDBG requires you to have a rate study done. This one is the Water Sector Program. It requires a rate study to be done. And with the Water Sector Program, it requires the one point one-five. Some of the other ones may not require the one point one-five, but they are all going to the one point one-five eventually. And they are getting to the point where if you don't meet the one point one-five, they're not gonna give you the grant. You know, basically, if you don't help yourself, we're not gonna help you in that aspect. They want the water systems to be able to stand. And, and again, transferring in i- is an option that can be discussed over the next couple of months as we move forward with this.
Any other, Ms. Peterson?
I, I know that we have been transferring in, but the question is, what are you transferring from to prop up a water system or into our sewer system? So something, you're robbing Peter to pay Paul, basically.
Right. Yeah, it, your, your water system and your wastewater system, and then y'all, y'all also have gas, which, which we don't, we don't deal with the gas on the... Rate studies on the gas side. We do have a gas circuit router that comes out and helps in the field and, and with paperwork and certifications and stuff. The water system and your wastewater system, and like I said, the y'all gas system are basically your revenue. Everything else, yes, it's all tax porting your taxes for, for, for everything. But if you have to use all your taxes and put into the water system and the wastewater system, then you can't fix roads, you can't fix ditches, you can't fix your parks and, and, and a- any of the other things that the town has or needs to do. Like you said, you're robbing from Peter to pay Paul.
Any other questions on the water system? We're gonna build a wastewater system, and I do have, uh, Mr. Rose that wants to speak, so we'll let him present both of them, and then we'll hear comments after that, uh, to the wastewater.
Okay.
And look, I'm just gonna go in and break the surprise. Both of them are in the red, water and the wastewater, so you're about to see that.
So, uh, without going into the, the same details, same, same basic rate study, same, uh... Information from the same years, uh, just the numbers are gonna be a little bit different. And with the expected, same expected growth, uh, the water, wastewater system is basically transferring anywhere from a million and a half to two million gallons to be treated, uh, through its pump, pump stations and lift stations. Water and wastewater in general, it's gonna cost you the same to more generally. It costs you more to treat wastewater than it does to treat water. In this instance, the, the city is pumping the water to sulfur, and they are, they, it's going to their treatment plant. So y'all don't have the, the added expenses of the treatment plant that would be in this. So the, the, the cost per thousand would probably be a little bit higher if y'all had that additional cost and be more than the water, because in general, it costs you more to treat water than it does to treat wastewater. The flat rate, the, the, the rates currently are at flat rates, uh, with formulas with the commercial and the industrial combined together. The bottom line, it's five hundred and eighty-four thousand dollar loss, sitting at a point six-nine on the wastewater side. Again, standing on its own without any type of transfers in. We, when we began discussing, we looked at restructuring the wastewater to be charged a rate similar to like the water is being charged per two thousand gallons and then a charge per thousand after. Uh, basically based on the same amount of water that you use, that's the amount of wastewater. Not always, but that's primarily the only way that a, a, an entity can do it. Any, any city, uh, that you go to, any place that's charging you for water and wastewater, however much water you use, that's how much wastewater you're getting charged for. And so, uh, breaking that down, again, for the Water Sector Program, we had to, we had to have a, uh, short-lived asset account. And if y'all have any questions about any of the numbers or anything, we can certainly discuss it. We looked at going for the first two thousand gallons, basically the same price as your water, which puts your average bill at about fifty-one dollars. So you had, you're looking at right at a hundred dollars for water and wastewater for the, the total bill. Uh, it'd be thirty-seven, thirty-seven for in five gallon, five dollars per thousand after, which sixteen sixty-nine. Twenty-two, thirty-one in five dollars per thousand. That's eleven sixteen commercially, five thousand gallons. Eighty-eight, forty in eight eighty-four, seventeen sixty-eight per thousand. Basically, this, the same rates that the water is, is what we opened up for discussion and, and brought up. If that is done, when they're looking at total, and, and, and all of this says water, but this is wastewater. Two million, a little over two million dollars in revenues, uh, one point eight million in proposed operating budget needs, two hundred and eighty-two thousand, and puts the city at a one point one-five, being eligible for the one, one point five million dollar grant on the wastewater side. Two point... Two million. Two five on again, two million, making them eligible for the grant. Again, it, it, it is some big changes. Unfortunately, everybody throughout the state that we're seeing is in the same boat. Uh, we have all kicked the can down the road, uh, for a long time. Expenses have, for water and wastewater sets, uh, systems, and you can ask that man right there. National inflation has probably been fifteen, twenty percent. Water and wastewater systems, it's been about forty percent that the expenses have gone up. The drill a well, the, the water system I was running back in two thousand and eleven, we drilled a, a, a new well, eight hundred foot deep, eight inch well, it was three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. What's it going for now?
About eight hundred.
At eight hundred thousand. It, it has gone up. Chemicals have had, across the board, an average forty percent increase. Everything is going up. And yes, absolutely, Mayor and Council, y'all can continue putting taxes in. Y'all have that, y'all, y'all have that right, but you're gonna get to a point where the taxes aren't gonna carry the city. And so something definitely needs to be considered, and, uh... It is.
So what's more, without me saying it, them hearing it from the profession, basically you came in and did an audit, and our water and wastewater are both running in the red.
Yes, sir. They are both standing on their own with no transfers in. They are both losing money, without a doubt.
Any questions from my councilman?
Oh, Ms. Brunson? So, I'm just kinda curious here, 'cause how do other cities, okay, are able to get these grants? I mean, they're, we pay twice as much as what Jennings does for their water. I mean, we pay more than sulfur. We're the highest rate in the area.
Yes, sir.
So how, how do these other cities, are they able to get the grant if?
Well, uh, I, I know Jennings for sure. I, I, I don't know, uh, all the sizes, but Jennings is basically, we all have a population of about six thousand. Jennings is about nine thousand. So you spend a mi- split a million dollars up in between six thousand people and split it up between nine thousand people, the people that's, nine thousand people are gonna pay less. You know, you...
The less one.
Hmm?
No.
Okay.
Any other questions for council? All right. Mr. Rose, come on up to the microphone. I will let you speak a few minutes. He signed up. It's Ken Rose, and he lives at nine fifteen Sampson, or nine fifteen Sampson Street. And that way, we'll have you here to answer any questions that you may have. Speak into the mic. Thank you, Ken, for coming.
Thank you, guys. I sit back here and ask the good Lord to give me a prayer, 'cause he knows how much I hate public speaking. Uh, Mr. Duck, great report. First of all, I come to you today wearing two hats, as a friend to the city of Westlake and as a businessman concerned citizen. There is nothing that I won't do for any of you, and when I leave this room, I hope to be a... And when I leave this room, I hope to be as good of a friend as I've been when I come in. I listened to your study and it was quite informing. The two areas that brought the most concern that put a bullseye was A, on commercial counts. And B, on the businesses that are with the wastewater, both of them being a red. I wonder, at this point, it seems to me that your critical path going forward is in repairing these waters. If what I'm seeing, these meters, you're you've got a twenty-one percent increase coming at you. Or maybe more, how? Why don't we have contractors out there or a contracting group out there and slamming these damn meters in? That's one. Two, how many people in the city of Westlake you think's got swimming pools? I got one. I guarantee you, a third of my water loss every day is through swimming pool evaporation. How, why are we paying wastewater on citizens in here that have swimming pools? Third, you guys realize that we have three businesses in this town that are one hundred percent ran by water? They would be the two car washes in Marvin's Detail Shop. Why are we paying wastewater services on that? You know, folks, I sat down with my girls prior to all of you coming into office and everything. It was before Christmas last year. And I told them all, I said, ladies, I said, if I can just get you through twenty-three and twenty-four and break even and keep you in a paycheck, that's gonna be one hell of a milestone. Now, everybody knows where this economy's in the stupor. Nobody, that's not rocket science, folks. But we have, we live in a community where the majority of us live on fixed income. And if you go attacking the commercial water rates, mine's gonna double. I pay two hundred and thirty-eight dollars a month. It's gonna go to five hundred dollars a month any damn way you cut it. So I asked myself, what's the difference between my business and your business? I got news, there is none. There is none. I'll get hit first and you get hit second. Before Christmas, ninety-nine percent of my food sales was on bank cards. Today, less than seven months later, ninety-nine percent of my credit cards and sales are on credit cards, not bank cards. And sooner or later, the ship's gonna hit sand. And when that ship hits the sand, we're all gonna be in trouble, because if I can't make money, I can't pay taxes, you can't spend money. But folks, I, you know, you got to stop the damn bleeding.
That's right.
Pure and simple. Nobody in this community is gonna point a finger or put you all down or run you in the ground for just surviving. And I'm telling you, the worst is yet to come. You all need to get proactive instead of reactive. Because pretty soon, people this winter are going to be making a decision as to whether by medicine or paying gas bills. This is just the beginning, folks. There's not a damn thing wrong with pulling back and saying, let's reevaluate this situation.
Ken, can I can I address something to you?
Yes, sir.
Proactive, I think that's what we're doing here.
I think you are too, man.
We came in and we we've looked at the survey. It shows us that we're in the red in the city and having to subsidize the water and and wastewater. So I I think this council is trying to to get the city out of the red.
And I'm gonna tell you right now, you don't want one hell of a job. You have to be nuts to want one of your guys' job. I'm just telling you the truth. But
And 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 back back to you saying that, I look, I I so much appreciate what you do for our city and and everything. You're always here for us. You're a hundred percent of the time.
Thank you.
You're an honorary Westlake guy like you've been here all your life.
I and I I appreciate that though.
But we all, we all kinda swore an oath when we got up here, and we would look at the city finances to make sure we're not running us in the ground. And this is a situation that after this audits come in, my accountants are saying, hey, this council, I need I need to bring it to them and let them make the decisions on which direction they see us moving forward on on this. So hold on just a second. Ms. Peterson, want to say something?
Mayor, I I can thank you for going up and speaking. This is an introduction. And I I hope that maybe we can maybe find some wiggle room. This is worst-case scenario. This is like worst-case scenario. So maybe we're working, um, with Tony, we can maybe find some wiggle room there to back those rates down. I mean, I don't know if it's possible to stay within the one point one five.
I I think I think there's a few areas to be looked at.
That's what I'm saying. I think I think we just need to say, this is this is the worst-case scenario. Let's see if we can back them without having to depend on, as I said, transfer money from one, the bleeding somewhere else to prop the prop these, uh, business units up.
I'll I'll give you my tip. I need you to help.
But, Ken, let me say one other thing to you. We subsidized it about a million dollars last year.
Yep.
Uh, anything less we can subsidize with is money that we didn't, we didn't spend last year.
And and this.
So it drops to a hundred thousand or two hundred thousand on subsidizing it. There's an eight hundred dollar dealt, eight hundred thousand dollar dealt in there that I wanna work. I can tell you, this council wants to work with every commercial person out there. And these rates, what we're doing is wanting to introduce it, so we can take them and tweak them and work with Tony to find out where they need to be. That no one sector of the city is getting getting hammered with the rates aspect and.
And and as Ms. Laurie said, you guys have heard the situation, it's just kicked the can down the road, now it's caught up with you. But once again, meters and water evaporation may be enough to recover a part of your water side and your wastewater side.
And, Ken, let me, let me just mention this, because in the first eight months that we've been here, we've had some changes.
Yeah.
And I'm very proud of my public works and what they've done.
Well, they have helped.
Three hundred and eighty-six meters in the beginning.
Yep.
I I think we have a few meters go out every month. But that number is down in the maybe double digits just a little bit. But we went from hundreds down to a a small number of of meters, which is.
There's feedback.
Give me Hendricks here. But anyhow, we are working, getting the meters changed out, getting the batteries changed out, and then we're working on it.
Yes, sir.
And your comments were well taken. Very appreciated.
And and I wanna thank you all once again for the time to stand here. And I, man, I appreciate being part of this community. It's it's awesome. Awesome. Thanks.
All right. Any other council questions? Any other council comments? Ms. Peterson?
Just wanna say that it's a great job, um, by Mr. Son Ye. Great job by this and Mr. Milner. I'm sorry, I don't wanna say Paige first.
Go ahead.
So everybody did a great job, um, with this proactive plan to find a way to move Westlake in a situation to be successful. Um, and, you know, everybody keeps saying the same thing. You gotta be crazy to sit up here and take one of these jobs. You really do. But at the same time, we gotta do what's best for citizens and what's right by our citizens, and we gotta vote in the way that we see fit for our citizens. So that's it, man.
Thank you. Any other question? Okay, so I was out of May. We did through the discussion, so we can go out of B right on here. All right. Out of B, I need a a second, I need a motion and a second to approve for this room. Introducing ordinance number ten twenty-eight. It's ordinance amending section seven dash ten seventeen of Dakota ordinances amending the water rates for the city of Westlake. We're not changing rates. We're introducing the ordinance. We'll have a month or two months or whatever we need to look at this. I got a motion by Ms. Peterson. I need a second to approve. Your second.
Do we have a roll call vote, maybe?
We only have a second.
Got.
Got a second by, uh, Mr. Cryer. We can have a roll call vote on this and once more. It's the introduction of an ordinance. It's not changing any rates. This is on the water system. Roll call, hold, man. Secretary?
Ms. Peterson? Question to approve and fashion.
So you can just answer yes if you're approving and no if you're disapproving?
Mr. Cryer?
No.
Mr. Rujia?
No.
Mr. Harrison?
No.
Mr. Brown?
No.
Motion failed, uh, four to one, so I don't think we'll need the next motion on the wastewater. I guess we can go ahead and do that two or three of the motions second up there.
We have to.
We have to under protocol by rules orders. I need a motion and a second. It's out of C. It'll be a motion second approved, disapproved, introducing ordinance ten twenty-nine. Ordinance amending section seven, two oh oh four, users charged schedule amending the code of ordinances, setting the sewer rates for the city of Westlake, which would also be just an introduction of an ordinance. I need a motion by Ms. Peterson and a second by Mr. Harrison. Roll call vote, a yes will be to approve. Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
And a no to disapprove.
Ms. Peterson? Yes. Mr. Cryer?
No.
Mr. Rujia?
No.
Mr. Harrison?
No.
Mr. Brown?
No.
There we go. It was failed, uh, four to one. Next up, out of number, out of D, the motion second approved, disapproved, upholding the zoning, board approval to change zoning from nine twenty-five Shaffer Street from R one single family to residents or in multi-family residence. James Perkins and Bear Barton are the owners. I got a motion by Mr. Let me reset that. Go again. I got a motion by Mr. Rujia and a second by Mr. Harrison. When the motion ends, motion to approve, motion to approve, and a second to approve. If you'll vote, uh, that motion, that motion carries, so out of D is done. Out of B, make a motion, or I need a motion second to approve or disapprove resolution thirty-six sixty-six. A resolution approving the appointment of Lake Trolls Board to Harvard Terminal Commissioner. Reset it one more time. Go again, guys. I didn't reset. I need a motion by Mr. Harrison and a second by Mr. Cryer. We've submitted three names on that. Uh, the three names are John Crater, Hillary Langley, and Clayton Rujia. Are the three names that have been submitted. Also to approve. I got I got the motion to approve and a second by Mr. Cryer. Any discussion, any objection? Here you go. That motion carries. Out of behalf, I need a motion and second to approve or disapprove appointing Rick Morello to the Westlake Real Estate Board upon a recommendation, recommendation of Mayor Howman Millen. I got a motion by Ms. Peterson and a second by Mr. Rujia. Any discussion, any objection? Here you go. Motion carries. Out of G, need a motion and second to approve or disapprove resolution thirty-six sixty-seven. A resolution authorizing Howman Millen, mayor of City of Westlake, enter to a lease agreement with Ultra Outdoors for additional billboard to be placed on the northwest corner of Westwood Road and National Drive. Execute all documents with the end. I got a motion by Mr. Brown to approve. A second by Mr. Harrison. Any discussion? Any objection? Here you go. That motion carries. Out of H, need a motion and second to approve or disapprove resolution thirty-six sixty-eight. A resolution authorizing Howman Millen, mayor of City of Westlake, enter to a cooperative endeavor agreement with Calhoun Parish Police Jury for paving, pavement markings in various roads to execute, execute any and all documents. I got a motion by Mr. Rujia, a second by Mr. Brown to approve, to approve. Any discussion, any objection? Here you go. That motion through. Out of I, I need a motion and second to approve or disapprove introducing ordinance number ten thirty. It's an ordinance authorizing the name of Mulberry Street from Sampson Street west to Gilroy Street located in the city of Westlake to be amended and changed to Bob Party Street and otherwise providing all respect, um, respect therewithin. I have a motion by Mr. Cryer and a second by Mr. Brown. Discussion, Mr. Cryer?
No, I wanna, I wanna thank y'all. I've been harassing you for the last couple of months to do this amount of talk with you, and I think that'll be a part of your ceremony that you're gonna have. I know they're extremely happy. We all miss a lot. I really appreciate your honor.
Well, it was a great honor. I graduated high school with me, and it was a great year. I can tell you, we're gonna go from Popeyes to, uh, basically, in in our regular language, go from Popeyes to the bank to the, uh, post office. And all this will be Bob Party Street named after him. I've talked with all the merchants along there, and they're all in agreement, and we're excited about it, uh, to honor our former mayor. All right. Any discussion, any objection? Here you go. That carries. Out of J, need a motion second approved or disapproved resolution thirty-six sixty-nine. A resolution authorizing Howman Millen, mayor of City of Westlake, in entering to a cooperative endeavor agreement with Calhoun Parish School for Financial Assistance and Hiring Resource Officers and to execute all documents with the end. I got a motion by Mr. Brown, need a second.
To approve.
To approve, second by Mr. Rujia. Any discussion? Any objection? Here you go. This motion carries. Under the updates, I need a motion and second to approve the updates. I got a motion by Mr. Rujia with the hand, listen over to Harrison, gotta to discuss the updates.
Who makes the second? Who makes the second?
Uh, Mr. Harrison. Under updates, we'll go to Byron. Why, thanks here on behalf of Lauren Harrison and Myers and Associates.
Thank you. Not much has been, I guess, progressed since last month's update, but I'll go over the ones that have. So the Westlake twenty twenty-two drainage improvements, phase one. Those contracts were executed by the city today. We're picking those up. So we'll be in the process of signing said contracts and scheduling a brick construction meeting with the contractor on that particular job. So the city furnished materials, the drainage pipe that y'all have on hand and stored, will be installed under that contract. As far as what we were discussing earlier, the two projects that were funded with water sector grant funding, the Jones Street, uh, Ground Source Tank, that project, those plans were approved by Department of Health and Hospitals. And it was waiting on the completion of the rate study to be completed before they gave the permission to move forward with advertisement for bids. So we're gonna be in the process of doing that now that the rate study is complete. We'll be discussing that. And if there is any issues or things that need to be discussed, we'll present the basis.
Mayor, I have a question.
Ms. Peterson?
Since, uh, since the rate study was completed and the total cost of that project is what?
So that. So, that project is estimated at just a construction of five hundred and seventy thousand dollars.
About a thousand dollars. My, my question is, if, if, moving forward, if this rate study is not, um, put forth as, as they have, um, shown us, how long do we have before we would lose that grant money? Will we have to find five hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars somewhere else?
Well, I will attempt to answer that question the best way I know how. I'll allow Tony to, you know, object at some point in time if I say the wrong thing. But the point of the rate study is to delineate if there is a deficiency and what said deficiency is. And it is upon the grant recipient to respond to that deficiency. They are not saying that you have to do this with your rate studies, but they are recognizing that there is a differential in your operating budget versus your revenue budget. So, at that point in time, the city has to make a decision on how they're gonna rectify that. I will defer to Tony if there is any requirement that states that has to be funded in a certain timeframe or manner.
Tony, you can look, might answer that question on that behalf of Ms. Peterson.
I don't know of a set timeframe, uh, kinda like you, the requirement says that the, do a rate study, you see the deficiency, correct the deficiency, they're gonna give you the money. Uh, if, if there is a, uh, specific timeframe or not, I, I don't, I don't believe there is, uh, in that aspect.
And the reason I state it like that is because City of Westlake has their own ordinances, charter, regulations, stuff of that nature. Whereas another municipality may have stipulations within their own charter that if they wanted to change their rates, they have certain maximums or minimums that they can change by. And it may take multiple years to do so. Like I said earlier in the evening, that there's a lot of grant recipients who are dealing with the same issues you were being presented tonight, whereas their case may be much worse. And it may take five, six, seven years to get to that point. So each grant recipient's having to weigh what options they have and come up with a plan of action to address that differential. So, I hope I had.
Ms. Peterson, you still have the floor?
Just one other question. The, the project as we have, is a critical needing for Westlake?
Yes, sir.
Any other questions, you know, Mr. Brown, can we report?
Um, for the most part, uh, other than the pavement market project, we're waiting the bids to see when they come back from the parish relative to, uh, what we estimate.
Mr. Harrison?
Um, we said we had two projects under it.
Correct, yes, sir. The other one is what we call the sewer transport system, which is the basically last system that ships sanitary sewer flow to salt. And that project is, the last time we ran an estimate, it was like a seven or eight million dollar estimate. And two million of the funding was through the water sector. So that project, we've been in constant communication with Department of Health and Hospitals on what that scope of work is gonna consist of, as to what that funding's gonna be utilized for. And to, I guess, speak more on what Tony had mentioned earlier and Mr. Rose had mentioned, is that part of those system improvements is going to be what was done on the lift station in Wausau where there's a flow meter, uh, flow ring that is done by a meter. And we're gonna put those on different stations as part of that system improvement to know how much sewer is coming from each part of the city. So we can defend, delineate if there is deficiencies, where to focus us from tomorrow.
Any other questions? All right, uh, Mr. King is not in, didn't really have any updates today, so, uh, on the reminders, I wanna remind everybody, if you legal blow grass into the streets, the drain storms, already the rain to wash them in there, but hopefully we'll get some. But, uh, also we'd like us that you pick up your trash cans within a twenty-four hour period. In Calhoun Parish in the state of Louisiana, as a whole, right now is under a burn ban. By that, we'd be very respectful of that. I need a motion, second to approve, reports. Motion by Mr. Ms. Peterson and a second by Mr. Harrison.
Correct.
Any discussion on reports, any objection, hearing done, it carries. Now, out of, uh, out of twelve, the reports, I need a motion and a second to hear departmental reports. I need a motion by, a motion, Mr. Brown, second by Mr. Rujio to hear departmental reports. Uh, first up, Chief of Police, Mr. Will Wright.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, uh, y'all have y'all's, uh, report and y'all's packet. Uh, also on the report that we are doing, we have two officers that have been hired for the school resource officers. I have two applications that I'm currently looking at to fill the third. Uh, we wanna thank y'all for allowing us to this partnership with the school board to make this happen in Westlake. And I can please run a report, Mayor.
Question, Ms. Peterson?
Uh, Chief, uh, I thank you for your report. Just a, a question on, you had ten thefts during the, um, last month. Is that isolated to one area or is that across, uh, our entire city?
It's across the entire city.
It's across the entire city.
Any other questions for Chief Will? Next up, our report, Chief Jonathan Dove. Can you move it back to the middle of the unit later?
We're good right here, it's just, it's always talk for me, I'll just stand back. Uh, go through a couple of things. The one thing that I do wanna say is, uh, reiterate with embarrassment that the state is under a burn ban. Uh, today, the fire marshal actually called it, uh, red, red flag conditions for the fire service. And, uh, what that says, I'm gonna read this to you real quick. Rapid ignition and spread wildfires as possible due to persistent hot and dry conditions. Uh, we have a combination of strong winds, low humidity, and dry vegetation. Uh, so one of the big things that's going on around the state is, uh, you know, the fire service is running calls like crazy. Uh, right now, they're talking to the governor about, um, a state of emergency to try to bring in some outside help. Because, you know, like right now, they've got fires up in Sabine, they've got fires down in Cameron. They really can't pull from Calhoun because if all the firefighters in Calhoun leave, people help. And there's a fire in Calhoun, so, uh, you know, everybody's in a pretty good bind. So, having said that, uh, you know, there's, there's a lot of talk with the fire marshal. Uh, we're under a state of emergency for the state, they're looking at it from the federal level. Uh, and right now, in fire, uh, you know, all the different fire districts, uh, if you burn, you get a ticket. I mean, it's, it's, it's getting to the point where the, you know, police and, uh, the sheriff's office, for sure the sheriff's office here in the parish is enforcing it, they are taking the people. And really, burning has not slowed down at all. Uh, it's a crazy thing to think that people are burning in the conditions. But we run multiple calls every day, you know, most are outside of the city limits where people say, oh, I didn't, I didn't know there was a burn banner, I didn't know we couldn't burn these things. And so, uh, you know, that's, it's, it's what it is, it doesn't look like it's gonna slow down at any point. Uh, but having said that, I do want to assure you that, you know, your firefighters here in the city are highly trained, they're highly conditioned, this is what they do. So if there is a fire, they will go put the fire out. It's, you know, it's, it's no hotter than, you know, a normal fire. And that's one of the things that, that, as you look around the community, there, you know, the volunteer departments are having trouble. You know, people are working, they, they're, they're going home, they're tired, they're not wanting to come back. But you have paid firefighters in the city who spend all their downtime getting ready for these things. So you'll see them out there, you'll see them fighting fire until the outside temperature reaches the temperature of where a fire is inside of a house, you really don't have any problems. It's, it's normal business for us, so I just wanted to give you all that assurance. Uh, over the last month, we've done, you know, our regular training. Plus, one of the big things that I thought y'all would find interesting is, uh, last week, we had two guys out on the lake doing what was called a tactical operators course. Uh, that course was with the sheriff's office, with National Guard, with Wildlife and Fisheries. Uh, they brought in some big national, you know, training company. And, uh, you know, we were invited by the sheriff's office to, to take part in this training that's thousands of dollars. So, you know, they sponsored these guys, uh, they were out on the lake doing maneuvers, you're gonna see more of that. You know, you don't, don't think it odd to see Westlake firefighters in the boat with sheriff's office, uh, you know, maybe riding around with the, the National Guard, Wildlife and Fisheries. You know, because we're on the water, we tie in with all these agencies and we use our resources that we have to try to get training opportunities and things like that for the city of Westlake at no cost. So, so that's the good news for you. Uh, other than that, um, this week, uh, we will be having, uh, Captain Matt Webb rotating through here. Uh, and I don't know if y'all noticed, but there's an A V hanging in the hallway. Uh, so that's there for emergencies and Matt being our, uh, you know, fire prevention guy and the public relations, uh, aspect of things, he's also a CPR instructor. He's gonna be coming, getting with some of the girls, maybe the mayor, if he wants to be CPR certified. And so any of y'all, if that's something y'all are interested in, uh, he's gonna be here Wednesday and Friday. But at any point, if that's something you want, you can just come to the fire station, uh, when he's on duty, we can get him fixed up. It takes a couple hours, a really beneficial class. We also teach that to, uh, babysitters, people in the community, people at the recreation centers. So anybody that needs CPR, uh, that's a service that the fire department provides. That's my report.
Chief, uh, do you have someone in paramedic school?
Uh, yes, actually, uh, we just put, uh, uh, our assistant chief, Jimmy Boyett. He's the newest guy in a school and he just started paramedic school. It's gonna last about a year. Uh, Mayor helped us out and got with Acadian ambulance. Uh, they're sponsoring a, a large portion of that class. Uh, Jimmy, uh, being in the military, had a lot of money left over from his G I bill and he was looking for a class, well, there's nothing local that keeps him here for us, uh, except for Acadian, and they're not set up to accept, you know, money from the G I bill. So Mayor helped us, we worked through that. So, you know, we've got the two guys that are the advanced D M Ts and we're continuing on that. But we've got Jimmy in paramedic school and we've got Michael Seer, who's a combat medic, fire, you know, fire department. He'll be doing that also near shore. Uh, our hopes is, of course, you know, to constantly upgrade the services that Westlake gets. Uh, but also in the EMS world, uh, whatever level you're at, you can generally teach the level below. So with those guys being paramedics, not only will they be able to run, you know, calls as paramedics, but they'll also be able to teach, uh, you know, the E M T advanced class to the guys at the station. And, and one of the big things that we're always after is self-sufficiency, train the trainers. You know, if we can send somebody to a class and they can learn to come back and teach that class, then it's money well spent because it, it saves money in the long run, so, yeah, so appreciate it.
The other thing with the paramedic opportunity, I think the people of Westlake would be, uh, interested in is having him on that, uh, emergency run. He has the education to save lives. We may save one or two lives or one life would be, you know, with, with his training. So that's, I really appreciate you pushing that training forward.
Yeah, absolutely, and, and just to kind of piggyback off of that, you know, one of the big benefits that we have right now is our guys who are E M T advanced, because the biggest thing that they bring to the table across the board is the ability to start I V's. And with this heat, you know, the amount of calls that Acadian runs, uh, you know, there's people in the community, we get calls from people who are overheating. Uh, you don't have to wait for the ambulance, if a firefighter goes down, if a police officer goes down, we don't have to wait for the ambulance, we've got guys at the fire station that can start an I V and start getting fluids into you. So that's a, that's a big deal.
During my report earlier, one thing I felt to mention, that we received notification at the end of last week that D O T D is gonna be hosting an information public meeting on August thirty-first at the Civic Center from four to seven to talk about the public-private partnership on High Ten Calhoun Parish.
We'll get back to that. I'm, I'm gonna repeat that too. Any other, anything else, any questions for the department? Right there.
Just rain, I didn't even know.
Public works director. Damon Horace.
All right, so in our department, we, uh, run weekly safety meetings. Two hundred fifty-seven work orders were submitted and completed. Other work was routine, we had set, uh, handled sentences and complaints and requests. Uh, the gas department, we installed new service lines. There were a hundred twenty-seven gas deposits received during the month and thirty-two disconnects. Uh, three hundred seventy-dotty calls were received and marked. And in the water department, water usage was, for the month, was fifty-four million, eight hundred eighty-seven thousand, nine hundred twelve gallons. There were a hundred and five deposits and forty-two disconnects. That concludes my report, if y'all have any questions.
Questions over there, I'm a public works director. And I, I, I just wanna reiterate, he is picture meters left and right. Thank you for that report. Uh, Code Enforcement Officer Curtis Lenz.
Council, y'all received in y'all's package, not written from last month. Uh, just a quick rundown. There was forty-four letters sent out to residents, whether it could be high grass, trash cans, junk vehicles, whatever. Uh, three stop work permit, or three stop work orders were issued for no permits for residents, it's being worked on. I had, uh, four locations cut by a contractor for high grass, he was awarded the bid. We had one incident where I had to contact the police department to come in and assist me on theft of utilities, we took care of that. The photographs was in y'all's packets, there was two of high grass locations, one for a C can in the yard and one of the locations that was cut by the contractor.
Questions for our Code Enforcement Office?
Here.
Go ahead, Mr. Brown.
The, I would go for the restrictions, none of y'all kind of been helping for some of that, how are we on that?
Some of the issues we're taking care of. I make passes through there once a week or so. I still see a couple of the eyesores that were mentioned in the initial letters, it's like they don't care. One of them, there's two boats in the driveway. The actual owner of that house came in and talked to me. I gave her some information to use on her behalf because it's actual rental property. I told her what she could do to try and rectify the situation, so.
We're gonna move forward. Any other questions? I would like to say that one of the things that he's been working on, uh, he's dealing with a lot of folks that still had got their insurance money and were feeling very passionate with that. But there's a lot of C cans still in, uh, yards that need to be, uh, taken out coming up on the third year anniversary of Hurricane Laura. And also there's some mobile homes still connected in people's yards that, uh, once they get their insurance money, we need to go ahead and move forward on our code enforcement to get those moved out of the yards, and he has been working on that. Any other comments on that?
That's good.
Any other, any questions for, any other questions?
Thank you.
Uh, Director of Golf, Jerry Pocket. Director of Golf, the Max, and various other things, so. And by the way, let me just say, we all had a lot of pride for Jerry last week. He had COVID and he was very sick and he made it through, so we're happy to have him here to meet him.
I thought COVID would be no big deal, I was going. As, as we go into the fall, we continue to work the golf revenue plan that we have in place, it's working outstanding for us. As we go into the fall, uh, the year it becomes tournament season again, uh, Austin has done, and Devin have done a good job on, uh, talking to tournaments about moving and making the weekday rates a little bit more affordable for the tournaments and a lot of people have gone with that. That keeps our weekend open for the higher revenue that we've been enjoying, mainly on Saturdays and Sundays. September eighth and tenth, the City of Westlake Championship is scheduled. On Monday, September fifth, Lamp, uh, it's an all-day double shotgun for over two hundred people. October sixth is a Friday, A B C Contractors event is coming up. October seventh is a Saturday, the Great Scrambino, it's the second, here we had that event. It's about a hundred. And then Monday, October ninth, another Monday event, Market Basket has an A D M shotgun for about a hundred and sixty players. So we expect strong revenues to continue throughout the fall and that plan is working well.
Any questions by the council? Hearing done, thank you. My next for, for finance and revenue, Mr. Milton?
Um, y'all had financial statements in front of you, I'll be glad to answer any questions now. any questions now, but any time.
Any questions for Mr. Milner on the finance report? Let's see. I need a motion and second to approve, to approve the reports. A motion by Mr. Ruzio, a second, Mr. Peterson. Any discussion? Any objection? Hearing none of those carries. Hey, real quickly, on the mayor's updated reports, uh, I will be in Baton Rouge tomorrow. They have, uh, D O T D is having a, a presentation on the I-ten bridge. I'm gonna be riding down there with, uh, State Rep Tarver, uh, Fornum, and Guyman. So, we'll be leaving tomorrow morning early, be down there for that meeting, and hopefully be back sometime after lunch. Uh, obviously, you said August thirty-first was, uh, one more time.
Yes, sir. August thirty-first from four to seven at Civic Center. It's a public information meeting for, just to talk about the public partnership.
Get out and, and, uh, speak on behalf of, how you feel about the I-ten bridge being built, tolls, no tolls, whatever your pulse is on that. Also, we're still planning. I have my two co-directors here. Uh, it'll be Mr. Peterson and Mr. Ruzio on October seventh. The We Are Westlake Festival will be held at Ponderosa Park, two o'clock, ten. Clayton, would you like to speak on, uh?
Yeah, so, we're going from two to ten P M., uh, live music, vendors there, as well as food trucks, uh, family friendly. Bring your, bring your chairs, bring your suitcase, uh, ice chests and what have you. We're gonna have a good time.
Is that same as last year?
One of, hang on. One of the things, we don't answer questions from them anyways. I'm sorry. You know, uh, we, uh, one of the things that we wanna talk about is also we're gonna use Westlake, uh, vendors.
Yes, absolutely.
I mean, Westlake, uh, bands.
Right. Westlake Band will be there to perform, you know, uh, National Anthem for us, as well as, um, the Jazz Band Performing Force as well.
Thank you.
Mr. Peterson?
And the performers, all the performers were Westlake natives.
Yes, yes.
This is truly a Westlake.
There we go. Remember, it's hot. Hydrate, stay safe, out, bring in outdoors. Uh, let's see. I need another motion second to approve, to approve, to approve by Mr. Harrison, Harrison's second by Mr. Brown. Any discussion? Any objection? Hearing none, that carries. Any motion to adjourn? Motion by Mr. Brown?
To adjourn?
To adjourn. Mr. Harrison, especially the objection, we stand adjourned.